The Tuesday, March 12th, 2024 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's typical during this time of the meeting for me to read an open podium invitation for or to our residents. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government. Prior to each city council meeting, these meetings typically occur the first and third Tuesday of each month. The open podiums occur from 6:30 to 6:55 PM here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and subject matter so we can be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. So, Mr. Gettrill, we have donations this evening?
We do, Mayor. We have a collection, a series of donations that Ms. Markle will explain and ask that you vote on.
Sorry, yes, Ms. Right. Go ahead, Amy.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have our quarterly donations from a variety of sources, which we're really grateful for and appreciative. Those will go towards various special events that the Park and Recreation Department puts on throughout the year and also our senior center, which helps lower the overall costs of putting on the event into our residents. So, in order, we have $2,000 from the Lion's Tap for Park and Recreation Special Events, $500 from the Southwest Transit for Senior Center Special Events, $1,000 from my predecessor, Jay Lotthammer, for the Senior Center Garden Area, $300 from Home and Stead Senior Care for the Senior Center Special Events, $400 from Wild Trends for the 3rd and 4th of July Hometown Celebration, $250 from Here Today for the Senior Center Veterans Breakfast and Monthly Bingo, $150 from St. Croix Hospice for Senior Center Special Events, $450 from Landmark Tours for Senior Center Special Events, $50 from Comfort Keepers for Senior Center Summer Bingo, $150 from Choice Connections for Senior Center Special Events, and lastly, $50 from Mount Olivet Adult Day Services for Senior Center Summer Bingo. So, we're grateful for everyone for contributing to the work that we do.
Thank you. Whoop, yes. Oh.
I have a question.
Please.
What is the total, too?
The grand total? I don't think I totaled them up.
It's 4,000. I did it really fast. It could be off. Forty-two, fifty, maybe, but I could be off a little bit. But it's over 4,000. It's pretty impressive.
Wow, impressive.
Yeah. So, Council, before the motion, I'll take one in just a moment. I often say this. I think we really can't say too much, that city government can do a lot with tax dollars, but we can't do everything. And these donations help stretch our dollars. And they're really meaningful. And I'm looking right now at where they come from, as Amy just read. But special places like Lion's Tap, which is not only the world's best hamburger, but I think they have given about every year, as far back as I remember, they've been such a wonderful part of this community. The Southwest Transit has been deeply involved, not just in giving money, but transportation opportunities. Jay Lotthammer, go Jay, Amy. I think the precedent has been set here. I won't be around when you leave, but just remember, we're expecting a thousand bucks. But by the time you leave, though, $1,000 won't be a thousand dollars. So, you're gonna have to up your game a little bit. But looking at the various other contributions of different groups that participate as partnerships with our city, I think that's the impressive part of this. It's just, that's almost more, to me, more valuable, more important than the dollar amount is the fact that we have so many partnerships with so many different nonprofits and agencies and groups that really benefit so many different aspects of our communities. So, good job, Amy, commandeering all of this, capturing, collecting. We appreciate that. All right. With that, Council, anything else anyone wants to say? If not, can I have a motion to accept?
I'll move to adopt a resolution accepting the multiple first quarter 2024 donations to Park and Recreation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. Moving ahead here with the agenda, and we need to approve the agenda. Are there any items, any council member report topics you wish to add to the agenda this evening? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Moving to the council approval of the council minutes, we had the workshop held back on February 20th and also the council meeting. Anything about any lines or edits within the minutes that you wish to either learn more about or correct, edit? If not, is there a motion to approve both the minutes of both meetings?
Move to approve the following city council minutes. Council workshop held Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. City council meeting held Tuesday, February 20th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. We have a lengthy consent calendar. For anyone in the audience or at home listening, consent calendars typically clump items that really don't need additional discussion. It's not that they're perfunctory, but they're generally fairly routine. However, I always give Council the option to question any individual item. And we'll, just to illustrate this, we'll let Councilmember Freiberg raise a question. Or go ahead, talk about one of the items.
No, I'd like to just talk about number B. I am an employee of the developers, so in the interest of transparency, I want to abstain myself from the vote on the consent calendar.
Why don't we have a motion on A to R excluding B, and we'll do B separately? Is there anyone else that wants to question or raise a concern? Would somebody make a motion to approve the consent calendar A through R with the exception of B?
I move the consent calendar for approval from A through R, excepting B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Now, item B, could I have a motion to approve item B?
Move to approve the item B.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and then abstain. Perfect. All right. And by the way, just for clarification, many of you know that through the years I've worked at United Health Group, and occasionally they'll have something on our approval consent calendar. Often for me, it was back when Shady Oak Road was being constructed, and I would do exactly what Councilmember Freiberg did. It sounds like legally, we don't technically have to, but I think we go above and beyond here. I think it's really good that we do. So, I appreciate any time council members are that transparent. So, thank you, Mark. All right. So, moving ahead, we do have three actual, well, two are fairly perfunctory. I don't know if they're housekeeping. I'll let you decide that. But three public hearings this evening. So, Mr. Gettrill.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, our first item is a unique land use application. The other two are either housekeeping or annual events, and we'll get to those after the first one, which is the applicant that owns the land at 9740 Eden Prairie Road is requesting to turn that piece of land into two single-family lots and one outlot on that location. The plat that would be before you is called Eden Prairie Ridge. The lots will be sold as single-family homes. Parcel is located on the west side of Eden Prairie Road between two segments of Prospect Road. It's currently vacant. It's bordered by single-family development to the south, in the west, to the east, and to the north and west is one single-family residence on a large lot. The project is consistent with low-density residential guiding, and the rezoning would be from rural to R1-95 for the two proposed lots. There's also, within this development, the option for future road connections that are anticipated to possibly extend Prospect Road based on future development and property in that area somewhere down the road. The applicant is here to briefly present his plan, and then staff and the applicant can answer any questions that the council has, and you then have a public hearing before taking action.
All right. So, we have a presentation by the proponent. Did you, yes. Dan, come forward. Okay, Dan, I always have to say this. You know that. So, I got elected in '94 and early '95. I think, Dan, was my very first developer walk. We walked the Mitchell, right kitty corner from here, and got to know you. And I've seen you now many times over the years, but you've graded a little bit. I think I have too.
Really?
I think '95 was a few years back. Anyway, nice to see you again.
Thanks. My name is Dan Blake of the Pembtom Land Company. Do we have a couple of pictures? Yeah. So, for whatever it's worth, there's the kind of the current aerial photo. It's an odd little piece, and it was a remnant of the, not the Mitchell Village, the Hennepin Village property, which is everything to the east that Pembtom developed, kind of starting about 20 years ago, over 10 years. So, it once, the history was it was once an auxiliary parking lot for the golf course that was on the property. So, that's why it exists as a parcel and why Pembtom owns it. Can we go to the next one, please? So, we're proposing two lots. It's not, it's not the most efficient use of the land, but for 20 years, we've met with staff, met with the neighbor, tried to figure out how we could put things together and do something more creative. And I finally said, we can't just keep waiting. We gotta do something. This isn't a bad plan. It just doesn't incorporate the five acres that wraps around it. And the clients like living where they are, and they've been consistent with that. They're not interested in selling. They're not interested in buying our property. So, we've got a property that is, was graded flat sometime in the '60s, I think, used as a parking lot. There is gravel up there, so there's very little vegetation, except on the hills, which are the edges at the west and the south. The lots meet the 95 criteria. They'll have two driveways fronting out onto Eden Prairie Road. Almost no grading. We anticipate doing the grading as part of the house construction, not a separate grading project. Sewer and water services have to get installed out in the street to Eden Prairie Road as well. Pretty simple. I don't know if Mr. Klein is here today, but he was, he had some issues with this idea of this future road. I don't, I'm opposed to it, too, but we're tired of fighting with staff on the idea. So, that's why the compromise was an outlot. If the city feels the need to build the road with the neighboring property, it could happen. I understand why it needs to come partly out of our property, because it has to line up with Prospect. It can't offset by 50 feet or something. I'm a, I'll put my money on that it's never gonna get built. Someday soon, I might not care anymore, but it, the provision is being made, and the city will control that if, so, you know, if it needs to happen someday. So, that said, open to any questions?
Council, do you want to ask any questions now, or go ahead and have the public hearing portion, and we can obviously ask questions afterwards? Okay. Yeah, just be available. Thank you so much. Mr. Gettrill, is there any need for a staff report at this point, or is there, or should we go right to the public hearing?
Mayor, I believe in the introduction, I think I covered everything that I would have to share.
I was listening. I just wanted to make sure that, in case there was something else. And Julie does a better job generally when, oh, I'm just, okay. Anyway, no, no.
He does, but you have to deal with me.
No, not at all. All right. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this particular development proposal this evening? Going once, twice. Okay. Council, so what's your pleasure? I mean, if you have questions, we could simply close the public hearing. If you think it's fairly straightforward and you're ready to, we can still discuss it, but if someone wants to make the entire motion, close the public hearing, and go ahead and move the development proposal as listed in our agenda, do you want to do that? Okay. Councilmember Freiberg, are you up for it? Go for it.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance for a zoning district change from ruled to R1-9.5 on 1.7 acres, and adopt a resolution for a preliminary plat to divide one lot into two lots and one outlot on 1.7 acres, and adopt a resolution for the findings of fact in support of park dedication fees and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, further discussion or questions? You ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. I did get a second on that, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Wonderful. All right. Congratulations. Mr. Blake?
Thank you.
Mr. Gettrill, now we have the two resolutions to approve.
We do. Thank you, Mayor. So, annually, at this time, every year, the city holds a public hearing and takes action on our allocation of community development block grant dollars. These are federal funds that the city annually receives from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and these funds can only be used to support those of low-to-moderate-income services, and also, for us, a huge part of it is housing. On a regular basis, we obviously monitor these funds, and we have a major plan that you adopt on a regular basis, too, for how we're gonna use these funds. But each year, we receive an allocation of dollars that we have to assign for individual use. And even when we hold the public hearing and take action at this time of the year, we don't know that exact amount of dollars, but it's pretty close to knowing what it would be. And our estimate is that we're gonna be receiving about $335,000 in funds. Actually, we're probably receiving $280,000, but we need to allocate $335,000 of those funds for activities in 2024. And so, as I mentioned earlier, a majority of the funds are used on our own housing programs. So, we have our first-time homebuyer program dollars that we provide. We have, a big chunk of our money is for home rehab loans for those with qualified incomes. So, of that amount of money, that's probably the largest expense, $122,000. But we also provide smaller grants. We have dollars associated with fair housing. And then we also work with the West Hennepin Land Trust, who we provide dollars to, where they actually build owner-occupied affordable homes in Eden Prairie. So, we've done at least one, sometimes two, homes a year. So, we have those funds. And I would consider those somewhat internal, because those are our programs that we operate. And then we have about $55,000 that we are allocating to outside agencies, nonprofits that provide great service and benefit on our behalf of low-to-moderate-income residents. And there's two organizations doing three different projects, and I believe these are the same for the last, you know, several years. We have PROP for their housing support services and PROP for emergency vehicle repair. And then we have Senior Community Services for their home program, and home stands for household and outside maintenance for the elderly. So, that's the program where in residents in Eden Prairie, senior residents can get a lot of different chores and senior project, or projects done around their home. So, we have to hold a public hearing on allocating these dollars, and then the council would pass a resolution on accepting the funds and agreeing to how they're distributed according to what's in the packet and on the resolution.
Mr. Gettrill, you may have mentioned this. Apologies. Who serves on the Human Services Review Committee?
So, the review committee is, and I can have Julia weigh in, because I think this is a
Just about. I don't need, exactly.
Yeah. It would be a mix of city staff members internally and some of our partners, but I think mainly different departments within the city in community development, Parks and Recreation, Police and Fire, that make up the review committee, a cross-section of city employees that work directly with these nonprofits.
Okay. Council, any questions, any comments? If not, oh, wait, this is a public hearing. Forgot. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to just address the city council this evening? Give your name and the organization you're with. Thank you for being here.
Hello, I'm Brenda Lano-Wolke. I'm Executive Director of Homes Within Reach. Mayor, council members, city staff, thank you for having me here this evening. Last year, we were able to add two homes into our program in the community. This year, I'm happy to let you know that last year, at the end of the year, we had received a very substantial award from Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, which will allow us to further leverage the funds from Eden Prairie, and we plan on bringing in three homes this year. So, every year I come here, and I tell you what it means to our organization. But this year, I wanted to read a letter that was written from one of the homeowners that purchased a home this year. She says, "After separating from my now ex-husband, my three sons and I moved to an apartment in Eden Prairie. We lived there for six years, but as my boys grew, the apartment started to feel too small, and I knew that we needed a house. But I wanted to stay in Eden Prairie, because Eden Prairie schools and their teachers have been the greatest help in my sons' succeeding academically. Plus, Eden Prairie is very close to my job. Soon after I started looking for a home in Eden Prairie, I felt discouraged, because homes in my price range were either under contract within days or sometimes within hours. Our rent increased dramatically, and we were forced to move west. And I drove my boys to school each and every day on my way to work. Then one day, I saw a listing for a house that was listed by Homes Within Reach, and that was the first time I had ever heard about the land trust. So, I decided to do some research and find out more about it was, about what it was. I looked into HWR's application process to see if I could apply. Once I did, my application was approved, but it took some time to get through the whole process, because it was important for me to stay in Eden Prairie. I'm happy that this past year, in 2023, Homes Within Reach found the perfect home in Eden Prairie for me and my sons."
Nice.
So, that's what I wanted to share. The funds that you provide us do really make a difference in people's lives, and especially the youth that we're raising in this community. Thank you.
And you're involved in other communities as well?
Yes. We are currently in 14 communities in Hennepin County, and will be expanding this year into at least three more communities.
And how many total homes are involved in those 14?
Currently, our portfolio is at 210 homes.
And how many in Eden Prairie?
I can't give you the exact number. We've added a lot of homes. In the last three years, when I came on board, we were at 164 homes. So, we've had some significant growth in the last few years.
Nice. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council tonight? Come forward, please. Thank you.
I'll keep the positive news going. So, my name is Gary Spears. I'm with Senior Community Services. So, I was actually in this room in the inaugural city, Eden Prairie City Academy, Government Academy. I don't know if you, that was, I don't even know how many years ago. But, so, I've lived in Eden Prairie for about 25 years, and have worked at Senior Community Services for three. And Rick already pointed out that we provide services in the interior base to, for housekeeping and home repairs. We do lawns, lawns in the summer and snow removal in the winter. And my focus is on developing a technology program to help seniors with their technology. And so, a couple stories that I want to share. One is, we've worked with a woman that she was traveling for Thanksgiving, and we helped her schedule an Uber for, and then taught her how to use the Uber app, which is stuff we just completely take for granted, right? My kids are 23 and 21 years old. They've never known life without the internet. But that was really, we were very proud of that. And then, we are tightly in partnership with St. Andrew Church here locally, where we do a spring cleanup and a fall leaf-reaking event as well. So, two quotes that I wanted to share. So, one from the woman that we helped with Uber, she said, "This is the kind of service we all hope to get and can't normally afford." And then another quote from an Eden Prairie client, she said, "SCS is so helpful in understanding of what seniors are doing to stay in their home. Meanwhile, I've only touched on the surface of learning other features available on my phone." So, thank you very much from Senior Community Services for the grant, and hopefully we're, we'll keep using it well.
Thank you. Thanks for all you're doing. Is there anyone else in the audience? Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor Case and city council members. I'm Jennifer Loon, Executive Director of PROP. We are the food shelf and direct service financial assistance nonprofit here in Eden Prairie. And we want to thank you all so much for the partnership with PROP in many ways, but one of the very significant ways that we've received help is through the community development block grant, which has helped with our housing and emergency car repair funds. Most people know us as a food shelf, but aside from the food, which is our most requested service, the financial services, housing assistance is our biggest request that we receive from clients. And like our other services, that has been growing in need. Our fiscal year runs July 1st through June 30th, and the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2023 saw a 25% increase in the support that we offer to residents for housing assistance. Currently, we're obviously a few months left in our fiscal year 2324, and that coincides with our grant period. But the funds that we received for, through community development block grant for housing, were completely allocated by just the end of November of 2023. So, just a few months in. Just to give you some example of the type of requests and the need that we're receiving. So, 16 households at Eden Prairie received emergency rental assistance through PROP and through those CDBG funds, and that was 23 months of rent that we provided. The average rental assistance grant to a household is 1,875. Some of the trends that we are noting is that the rents, costs of rent continue to increase, and many households are coming to us not just one month behind in their rents, but maybe three to six months. So, we are often partnering with the county agencies, CAP, and others to come together and work with their staff and pool funds to help families kind of dig out of that hole and to stabilize them. We especially focus on families with children in school so that they can remain stable and keep their children in school without having to uproot and move them. And, you know, families may come to us for a variety of reasons, but much of what we're seeing is a sudden reduction in income due to an illness or something that causes a disabling condition that may force the family to become behind in rent and be at risk of eviction. So, I wish I had a letter to read, but we do collect quotes of thanks that we receive from our clients, and I'll read a very brief one that we included in our annual report this year. And I should mention, I focus so much on housing, but we also do the emergency car repair as well, which any unexpected expense can throw a family into financial crisis, and both of these things help stabilize families. Quote, "My family would like to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the financial assistance you've provided us with. There is just no way we have been, would have been able to catch up on our rent or get our vehicle repaired without PROP's gracious generosity." So, that extends to the city and to all of the support through these grants. We greatly, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Jennifer. We appreciate all of our nonprofits, and of course, the food shelf PROP is, it's probably one of the oldest, but certainly one of the ones that are dearest to our heart. They're all good. They're all, we love all of our nonprofits, especially the Eden Prairie Crime Fund. I always have to say. Lisa.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council this evening? Anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council this evening? Okay, counsel, if, if it's okay with you, go ahead and close the public hearing and go ahead and make the motion.
I'll move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the acceptance and distribution of 2024 CDBG funds as recommended by the Eden Prairie Human Services Review Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, you had an extra additional council meeting in February, as you do each year, to interview all applicants for different city boards and commissions. And the following meeting, that would be tonight, then you, at a public meeting, you make your appointments to all the boards and commissions, I think, as, as you know, as council members. Oh, boy, I can't believe I jumped to that.
I probably, I probably threw you.
Thank you, Maggie. No, it's all right. Well, that, when we get to that, do I have to repeat all that again?
No, we, we got it.
All right. Yes, Mayor, housekeeping. We have a easement that needs to be vacated for the Crew Car Wash development, former Burger King site. So as you know, when we vacate a utility and drainage easement, you get a new easement over that, but you need a public hearing and a resolution.
Great.
So that's what that item is. It just feels such a downer after the excitement of the.
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's my fault.
Not if you're Crew Car Wash, though.
Yeah.
I actually was invited up to the Wayzetta Crew Car Wash site just to tour it. After we approved it, they just wanted me to see what's coming in Eden Prairie. And, I mean, I've been to all of our real fancy car washes here. We have really nice ones in the city, but I, I think you will like Crew Car Wash. I was pretty impressed. Okay, so again, they're probably.
You get a car wash?
Pretty happy. I did, I did. It was a very, very well-done car wash. All right, so, counsel, this is a public hearing. Well, counsel, any questions ahead of time? I think this is fairly housekeeping. So, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to address the city council this evening on this item? The vacating, the easement with the Crew Car Wash. Okay, if not, counsel would, could I have someone close the public hearing and go ahead and make the motion?
Move to close. Go ahead.
Move to close the public hearing and adopt a resolution vacating part of the utility easement lying over, under, and across Lot 1, Block 1, Burger King, Eden Prairie additions.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. And actually, Mr. Getcho, we got to do payment of, I know, you just got so excited about the appointments. I, I was pretty excited too, so, I am, still. You're, you bet. Payment of claims, again, for anyone in the audience or at home, these are all the expenditures. In the old days, the classic, you know, cutting checks, and we, as, it's one of the most important things we do because it's all, we approve all the items that we spent money on this last month, and therefore, it's a roll call vote. But counsel, is there, are there any items to question? If not, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims?
Move approval of the payment of claims as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right, Mr. Getcho, you repeat whatever you do or don't want to, we're good, but it's all.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you. I appreciate how you interrupted me too and stopped me. I thought maybe you were going to let me go all the way through.
I didn't, it was Maggie.
Oh, no, the city attorney saved me. Yeah, so back to the appointments, and you can rewind three minutes if, if you're watching remotely, but this is your moment where you're going to make the appointments, three-year terms for, in this case, six of our seven commissions. We're going to get to the seventh one, the Board of Appeal and Equalization later, but the six active commissions that meet on a regular basis, of which you interviewed, I want to say, close to 40 people for maybe 20-some positions, so unfortunately, not everybody is able to be on a commission at this time, but as you said, Mayor, at the interviews, there are openings every year, sometimes they're even opening soon after the New Year, so we keep a list of people. We encourage people to apply again. We encourage people to, as we heard tonight, we heard from Gary about our City Government Academy, that's also a nice entry into local government if you're not on a commission or you're just entering commission. But as council members, you have the action tonight to appoint groups of individuals to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisor Commission, the Heritage Preservation Commission, Parks Rec Natural Resources Planning, Sustainability, and Human Rights and Diversity Commission. Following that, you will take action on chair and vice chair.
All right. Let's wrap it all up into one motion, but let's share the reading of it. So councilmember Toomey, if you would start with Flying Cloud, and then councilmember Narayan will just go down the line, if it's okay, I'll put myself in there too, and we'll just wrap back around and end with Lisa, with you again.
Okay. I'll move to appoint to the Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission Laura Herman and Warren Locan with terms ending March 31st, 2027.
Move to appoint the Heritage Preservation Commission Paul Thoreau, George Maxwell, Robert Bows with term ending March 31st, 2027.
And move to appoint to the Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Commission Jennifer Meyer and Kirk Spressler with terms ending March 31st, 2027, and?
Appoint to the Planning Commission Ed Farr, Robert Taylor, and Tricia Duncan with terms ending March 31st, 2027.
And appoint to the Sustainability Commission Cindy Hoffman, Erin Polk, and Carolyn Wieland with terms ending March 31st, 2027, and?
Last one there.
Sorry. Appoint the Human Rights and Diversity Commission Greg Lieper, Assad Aliwad, John Urbansky, Susan Weaver, Savannah Reese, Shanna Baines, and Jessica Wasaka with terms ending March 31st, 2027.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, congratulations and welcome. A lot of these are returning commissioners, but, and we appreciate just all the volunteer work and effort that these people give to us on the council, but to the people of Eden Prairie as well. All right, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor. So now, we ask you take action on all, voting on all the chairs and vice chairs and all the commissions. I will note, every single position is the same as last year with the exception of a new vice chair on human rights and diversity.
Okay. Councilmember Narayan, do you want to start since we ended? Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Move to appoint Daniel Dawson Chair, Mark Morhak Vice Chair for Flying Cloud Airport Advisory Commission.
And move to appoint Steve Schumacher Chair and Paul Thorpe Vice Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission, and?
Appoint Patrice Erickson Chair and Tom Poole Vice Chair of the Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Commission.
And appoint Andrew Piper Chair and Ed Farr Vice Chair of the Planning Commission.
And appoint Erin Polk Chair and Cindy Hoffman Vice Chair of the Sustainability Commission.
And appoint Gregory Lieper Chair and Kohsing Vice Chair of Human Right and Diversity Commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
And again, we just really appreciate the leadership that we get every year from these amazing commissions, but we have really a phenomenal group of leaders. Appreciate them very much. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, passes unanimous again. So, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you. So the final group is a board. It's a board of, our Board of Appeal and Equalization, and this is a group that meets once at most, twice a year, to handle all possible appeals of property valuation annually. And the city council typically appoints people that are experts in the real estate industry of different, hopefully also spreading it out amongst different real estate areas and companies and firms as well. So annually, you need to reappoint these professionals, and many of them actually also need a certain level of training that they receive to be on our board, and all the people that you're appointing this evening meet all the training requirements.
And I've often said the Planning Commission's the only statutory commission, but this one is, isn't it? Don't we, or at least we have to either ourselves be this board, or is that statutory?
There's a few, there's a few different options, Mayor, but there has to be a Board of Appeal and Equalization, and you choose to have real estate professionals view these property valuations, but you're correct, it is through state statute, this process is required.
And we, in a sense, are the appeal to the Board of Appeals. They can always come to the city council as an appeal to that. Is that accurate?
Actually, I think the next step would actually be district court.
Okay, all right. Thought we were in the middle there, but good. Not necessarily good, but nice to know. So, is there somebody that would make the motion to appoint the Board of Appeal and Equalization?
Move to appoint the Board of Appeal and Equalization Lyndon Moikwist, Nate Thompson, Steve Testman, Mark Hoffman, and Scott Wordle for the period of March 12th, 2024 through May 31st, 2024, or until the Board of Appeal and Equalization completes its work.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Mr. Getcho, we have under other business, a closed session. Let's see, Maggie, do you make, do I talk about where we'll, we'll actually adjourn from the closed session?
Correct, right.
Okay.
You just have to make the motion to close the meeting.
Okay.
State the purpose for the close.
Right. So, okay, I can do that, then, thank you. Wasn't sure if that was your role, but, so, every year, we do a performance evaluation of our one employee, meaning the five of us, hire one person, that's the city manager, in a statutory type B type of government, which is what we are, and then our city manager then run, hires and runs the organization that implements the, based on the direction of the city council. So this is our opportunity. We, each of us, over the last week or two, have given, written evaluation of our city manager. We'll get together now in a closed session, which is statutorily appropriate because anything to do with employees' status or employees, and he is our one employee, is, is a, just like legal issues, is a closed session. So we're going to not adjourn, we're going to go into the closed session, but we will adjourn from there. And so, when the lights go out here, I guess everyone's free to go home, and if you're watching from home, the meeting, for all intents and purposes, will be over, but we will continue on in closed session. Is there anything else I need to do at this point? We just get up and.
Make a, make a motion to close the meeting.
Yes. Oh, sorry, thank you so much. There is a motion there to go into closed session.
Move to enter into closed session for the purpose of conducting the city manager's review.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Now we will move into closed session. Thank you.